And the initial stuff and then we just won't hit any voting items until he's able to get on. So I want to go ahead and call this meeting to order Thursday, July 9th, 2020, the regular city council meeting for Fountain Inn. We have Councilman A.J. Dairy Berry, Councilman Jay Thomason, Councilman Matt Blackstone, Councilman John Mahoney, and Councilman Anthony Cunningham and myself. Mayor McClear, Councilman Clemmer should be with us shortly. If we'd like, we have Dr. Jim Spencer from Pleasant Grove to give our invocation today.
Okay, so that's for me to-
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, let me say, I'm Max pastor, so I'm glad to be able to be with you for just a few moments. And my mother was the city clerk of the little town of Jonesville for like 30 years or something. So I kind of know a little bit about this stuff, so I want to pray for you for wisdom and for direction. Because it's kind of hard sometimes to know what to do. So, and I just wanted to say, Proverbs, in Proverbs 1434, the Bible says righteousness exalts a nation, but sin is a disgrace or reproach to any people. So I pray that the Lord will give you wisdom and insight to always do the right thing. So let's bow together, okay? We'll pray. Father, I want to stop tonight and I want to thank you for each one on city council, for mayor, for all that's involved, Lord, in the leadership of Fountain Inn. And Father, I pray that you would give them each wisdom and discernment to do the right things, to do the things that need to be done for the good of Fountain Inn. And I want to pray for each one personally. I want to pray for their families, and I ask that you would bless them and watch over them. And Lord, what a time it is with this pandemic and all that's going on in our nation. I just pray, God, for that you just give this council wisdom, give them insight, and again, be with their families and bless them, protect them, watch over them. Thank you for their willingness to invest in Fountain Inn. So we just lift all this to you. Thank you that no matter what we go through, you promise to be with us. And you say to ask for wisdom, and when we do that, that you give it to us. So I lift this meeting to you. Pray that it accomplishes all it needs to be done, and we'll give you honor and glory. We ask all this in Jesus' precious name and for His sake. Amen. Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you, Pastor. Now we know who to call when I got to get Mac in line.
Yeah, just give me a call. I'll straighten him out, okay? See you, guys. Thank you.
The flag is in Sean Bell's window in case we'd like to stand and do our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and divisible with liberty and justice for all. We'll get started with the public forum. Ms. Woods, did anyone sign up today?
You're on mute.
No, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Bell, we've got a few presentations today, I believe.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First off, Ms. Johanna Inmay couldn't be here tonight, but on behalf of the city, we want to thank her and Ideal HR for their many years of service to the city of Fountain Inn. We thank her, and we've gotten her a card and a few other things as a token of our appreciation, but we did want to recognize her this evening. Second, I would like to formally welcome everybody to our new human resources director, Rebecca Ward, who comes to us from the city of Hartsville after a nice long stint there. She has moved to the city of Fountain Inn, and her first day was this Monday, and we are super ecstatic to have her.
Welcome, Rebecca. We're excited to have you.
Thank you. I'm excited to be here. We hit the ground running, so it's great. It's, I'm very excited.
Thank you.
Next up, Mayor, want to formally introduce to our council our promotion of Ms. Naomi Reed to Assistant City Administrator and Finance Director. Ms. Reed just celebrated her 14th year with the city of Fountain Inn, which is incredible, especially knowing that she's right about my same age. So she has a great, great start on the retirement system. But she brings a wealth of knowledge, and we're really excited to have her in her, in her new role.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm looking forward to continuing to serve the city in this new role, so I'm very appreciative. Thank you.
We're excited to have you, Naomi, still.
Yes.
And then Mayor, Ms. Reed is going to introduce Stephanie McCarthy, who is our newly promoted Assistant Finance Director.
Yes, Stephanie McCarthy has been with the city for almost a year. In a couple of weeks, it'll be one year. And so her time here, she has accomplished many, many great things already. First couple of weeks in, she helped transition the natural gas department from a cash-based system to accrual, helped lots establish a lot of policies and get some internal controls established. And so she is extremely dependable and very friendly and has established a great rapport with our leadership here. So we are excited to have her serving the city in this new role.
Thanks, Stephanie. We're excited to also still have you and have you fill in this new role. Something is up with your mute button. For some reason, it's in and out, in and out, in and out, in and out. But thank you so much, Stephanie. We're excited to have you continue in this role. Next up is the consent agenda, the minutes from June 11th and the preliminary May 2020 financial report. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
I moved.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstone. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Just so everyone knows, the same way we've been doing this before with virtual meetings, for every other item except adjournment, we're going to do a roll call vote just to make sure we get the minutes reflected properly. Next up is the city administrator's report, but I've asked, because we've got a couple of longer items possibly today, I've asked Sean to essentially, for us to say, just reference his report in the packet. And if anyone has specific questions, we can address those now, or we can do it later. Is that okay with you, Sean?
Yes, sir. I would say that, yeah, please, please read the report specifically. Take a look on page one under recommendations to improve race relations in the city of Fountain Inn. And the only other thing I wanted to add that's not in the report is that our roof replacement of the fire department headquarters building is going to begin on Monday.
Fantastic. That's a full replacement?
Yes.
Thanks. Any questions for Mr. Bell, from anybody? Not seeing any. Well, we're going to move on to unfinished business. I actually have a request. If there's no objection, I would like to move the Jenkins Bridge Road second reading to after executive session, because one of the items may relate to that and may impact. I want to counsel and make sure we have all of the information. Is there an objection to doing that? I don't hear any, so we will put that at the end of the agenda. Second item, second reading ordinance 2020-004, acquisition of financing for motor vehicles for public sanitation. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance 2020-004, providing for the acquisition and financing of motor vehicles and related equipment to be used for public sanitation, authorizing the city administrator to prescribe the form and details of the lease purchase financing of the vehicles and equipment, providing for the payment of the lease purchase financing and other related matters. This ordinance authorizes the city to enter into a five-year lease payment financing structure for two public works vehicles. One is an automated side-load garbage truck. We are expected to take delivery in mid-August of this year, and the other is a debris knuckle boom truck, otherwise known as a grapple loader, and we are about 150 days out right now from delivery of that vehicle. Responses to our bank RFP were due today at noon. We were extremely pleased with the number of responses. We had nine banks that were interested in financing this project for us. The apparent low bidder is BB&amp;T, or now Truist, with an interest rate of 1.42%, which is extremely low. And this is a not to exceed $475,000. It should not be that expensive. We're looking at closer to 443, but this, that just gives us a little bit of wiggle room, and I would recommend council approve this ordinance on second reading.
Great. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve on second reading ordinance 2020-004?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstone. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. I saw you, Anthony, but John, John got it in first. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of the approval on second reading of this ordinance, Ms. Woods?
John Mahoney?
Aye.
Jay Thomason?
Aye.
A.J. Dairy Berry?
Aye.
Phil Clemmer?
I think Phil said aye, but you're muted, Phil.
Okay. Matt Blackstone?
We'll come back to Phil.
Aye.
Anthony Cunningham?
You're muted, Anthony. There you go. Anthony, there you go. Gotcha.
And then, Mayor?
Aye. And Mr. Clemmer?
Aye.
Thanks. Just want to make sure we got it heard.
Okay.
Seven no. That motion passes. The next item is second reading, annexation 2020-004, Green Pond Road. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property into the city limits of the city of Fountain Inn, establishing a zoning classification and assigning this property to a council ward. This ordinance, AX 2020-005, would annex 1.42 acres near Green Pond Road into the city limits of Fountain Inn. It would zone the parcel I-1 Industrial District and assign the parcel to Council Ward 5. Planning Commission voted unanimously six to zero in favor of the annexation at our June 2nd Planning Commission meeting. And council has annexed adjacent parcels, and this is in order to add some additional property for the Fox Hill Business Park or Fox Hill Industrial Park located off of Highway 418 and Green Pond Road.
Great. Is there a motion to approve on second reading, annexation 2020-005?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Thomason. Is there a second?
Second.
I saw Ms. Dairy Berry's hand, and then I heard Anthony. Any discussion or questions? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, Ms. Woods?
John Mahoney?
Aye.
Jay Thomason? Did I hear Jay?
Aye.
Okay. A.J. Dairy Berry?
Aye.
Phil Clemmer?
Aye.
Matt Blackstone?
Aye.
Anthony Cunningham?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye. All right, that motion passes. Move on to new business. Item A, resolution recommending individuals wear face coverings in public buildings and retail and food service establishments. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution is from the city council of Fountain Inn, strongly urging and encouraging the following: Face coverings be worn by all customers while inside the enclosed area of any public building or retail establishment, and retail establishments should require staff to wear face coverings while working in areas open to the general public and areas in which interactions with other staff are likely, in which social distancing of at least six feet cannot be observed. And food service establishments should require staff who interact with customers, including, without limitation, delivery personnel, to wear face coverings while working. And face covering in this resolution means a uniform piece of cloth, fabric, or other material that securely covers a person's nose and mouth and remains affixed in place without use of one's hands. Face coverings include but are not limited to bandanas, medical masks, cloth masks, scarves, and gaiters, provided that they are worn such that they securely cover the person's nose and mouth. And it should be noted that this resolution carries with it no mandate and no enforcement. This is merely a resolution from city council asking the public to do something.
Great. I'll make the motion to approve our 2020-007. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Any discussion or questions? Yeah, Mr. Blackstone?
Yeah. I just, I can't ask people to, or encourage people that I myself am not doing. So I am not in favor at all.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstone. Anyone else? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, Ms. Woods?
John Mahoney?
Aye.
Jay Thomason?
No.
A.J. Dairy Berry?
Aye.
Phil Clemmer?
Aye.
Matt Blackstone?
No.
Anthony Cunningham?
No.
And Mayor McClear?
You're on mute, Mayor.
Motion passes for three. Move on to item B, E 2020-004, an emergency ordinance to continue the declaration of a state of emergency. I can go over this, or Mr. Bell or Mr. Holmes. I think this is just an extension of what we've been doing. Really, the best thing it does for us is it allows us to meet virtually, correct?
That's correct. Correct, Mayor. The first emergency ordinance was passed on March 23rd, which declared a state of emergency and allowed these virtual council meetings. We had a second one pass on April 9th, which waived penalties for business license and hospitality late payments. We passed emergency ordinance three on May 14th, which extended the state of emergency. These emergency ordinances are only good for 60 days. The 61st day for that emergency ordinance number three is July 13th. So E 2020-004 simply extends this for another 60 days.
Is there a motion to approve on first, on first and only reading, E 2020-004?
I moved.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Cunningham. Any discussion or questions? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of approving on first and only reading, E 2020-004. Ms. Woods?
John Mahoney?
Aye.
Jay Thomason?
Aye.
A.J. Dairy Berry?
Aye.
Phil Clemmer?
Aye.
Matt Blackstone?
Aye.
Anthony Cunningham?
Aye.
And Mayor McClear?
Aye. Motion is approved. And last item of new business, I believe, is more of a council discussion. Mr. Bell, do you want to frame it?
Yes, sir. The city of Fountain Inn is currently continuing our Sounds of Summer, our Friday night music series. This Friday, we have the Shag Office, and we have also been doing our Farmer's Market every Saturday morning. Councilmember Clemmer had asked me to look into what some of the other communities are doing regarding Farmer's Markets. There are several other communities that are requiring face masks for their vendors and/or customers. Currently, we have mandated that all of our Farmer's Market vendors wear masks, but we have simply encouraged masks for customers. We have also faced all of the vendors to the outside, and we have had arrows for the customers to follow. And really, the Farmer's Market has gone well. We've seen a lot of new faces this year. As far as music is concerned, the city of Malden has canceled their Beach and Fridays through July. Greer has canceled all of their music movies and events. Traveler's Rest has canceled all of their music and events. The city of Simpsonville is planning on starting up their music series at Heritage Park Amphitheater in August. They have had some movies there at Heritage Park. One of them drew over 600 people, but they have been drawing circles on the grass in order to keep people socially distant. Greenville has not been doing their music series. City of Clinton did have their Rhythm on the Rails Festival about a month or so ago, and the city of Lawrence did hold a fireworks display, but did not have any related festivities with that. The Accelerate South Carolina guidance has been provided in order to hold mass gatherings or large community events. Same with festivals and special events. Staff has reviewed these guidelines and have implemented many of them. One of the main items of guidance from Accelerate SC has been to limit these gatherings to no more than 250 people. At the last Sounds of Summer that we had on June 26th, we did count, we did a crowd size count, and we were right at that 250 mark. There were some previous Sounds of Summer events where we're pretty certain that there was more than 250. But June 19th, the Night Affair Band was likely our largest crowd of the season. And I know that there are some on council that would strongly like to keep the Sounds of Summer going. And I think there are others on council that may have some reservations. I believe city staff would like to continue having our Sounds of Summer, but we believe that this is a council decision and would like to get council's feedback and input on holding these events. And we do have Ms. Ellen Lane on the meeting here, and if she, if anybody has any questions for her.
Thank you, Sean. I'll just open the floor up for any council member.
I just, I think me personally that after looking at the reports of our fire department, people are catching the COVID-19. And even we have a gathering, you don't know who has it, who has come in contact with it. So I'm very skeptical. I mean, I'm fine if you open it, fine if you don't. I probably just want to be attentive if you have a safe spot, but I don't want to be a hindrance to no one.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Anyone else?
I'll go next. My, you know, everybody's aware of what's going on unless they're living under a rock or on a deserted island somewhere. I think we all have our decisions as adults. You make a decision to get out of bed every morning, to go to work or not go to work. At this point, I think if we were to cancel this, not only would it, people need things to go do. They're going stir crazy at home, and then you're taking away business from the restaurants downtown who rely on people coming to eat there during the concerts, before or after the concerts. And, you know, if you don't feel comfortable going out in public with something, don't go out in public. Everybody's very aware of what's going on. It's a chance you take, and if, you know, if you catch it, it's your responsibility and nobody else's.
I will agree with Matt. This ought to be everybody's choice. Personally, I've enjoyed it. I may or may not go, but I think we keep them going and let the community make their choice if they want to come or not. We've already paid most of them, I think, so I'd say keep it going.
I've attended a couple, and I've enjoyed it very much, too. And I think that, you know, I agree with Matt and Jay. If you want to come, you can come. If you don't want to come, don't come. You know, I have my mask with me if I want to wear my mask, if I don't want to wear my mask, you know, if I feel comfortable being around who I want to be around. As an adult, I think to make that decision.
I think we're all kind of beating on the same drum here, but I can support what, what all of the other council members have stated. I will just be, I will support what Anthony has stated as well. In my age group, I don't plan to attend, mask or no mask, but that's just my personal choice.
Thanks, Mr. Clemmer. And I would agree with everyone on council, and, you know, we've had instances close to my household, and, you know, it's not, it's not something to shrug off, but it is, I believe, like we emphasized with the resolution just a few minutes ago. It's a personal choice whether or not you want to attend something like that. And I do know, after talking with staff about, you know, what we do at the events, I think our staff have taken measures to protect themselves. And I do know we have ample signage to encourage what we're being told by healthcare professionals, but we're not policing it, for lack of a better term. But we just, so I would, I would concur with everyone on council as well.
I would only, I would only say that the guidelines that our administrator posted today, that we continue to adhere to the numbers. And my concern is, is the significant spike in Lawrence County. Businesses down due to the spike in our particular zip code and on further down. So that's really all I have to say.
I think I talked to Sean a little bit today about making sure that those guidelines are, you know, always in front of us and hopefully, you know, abided by as best we can. I also know that liability legislation in the State House, while not moving quite yet, but has been filed, is pretty much predicated on the idea of making attempts to follow guidelines that have been issued in order to mitigate your risk in terms of liability of exposure. So I think those guidelines are important for us to always have in front of us and try to abide by it every, at every instance.
We have also added, just this week, another eight-foot sign down there next to the stage, asking people to please wear a mask and social distance. And it actually has the Sounds of Summer logo wearing a mask. So we've added some additional signage to try to encourage people to do those things.
Yeah. I think I saw a picture of it today. Looks, looks good. Anyone else? Well, Mr. Bell, I don't know if we need a vote or anything, but I think you kind of got a clear direction from council on everything, correct?
No motion is necessary.
Okay. We have a couple of items in executive session to discuss, and then a reminder at the end of that, when we come back out of executive session, we will have action on Jenkins Bridge Road annexation. And for those who are watching online, just so everyone knows how that works, we will stop being live on Facebook. This meeting will continue, and then it will be a second posting of a live video when we return, a different video. And then all of it will be combined, of course, on our YouTube page later, I believe. So we need to go into executive session four, and I do have to read these. So, discussion employment, discussion of employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, and release of employee in the administration department, development agreement concerning property located at Greenville County Tax Map 0562010302, discussion of matters relating to proposed location expansion or provision of services encouraging location or expansion of services or other businesses in the area served by the city concerning Project Smoke. Now, D, discussion of negotiations incident to or proposed contractual arrangement with a business located on North Main Street. E, for the receipt of legal advice concerning the potential acquisition of right of way. Upon returning to session, we may vote on those items discussed in executive session. Is there a motion to go into executive session for those items? Is there a motion to go into executive session for those items?
Promoted.
Promoted.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstone. Mr. Cunningham, do you second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor of going to executive session, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none. We are now in executive session, so we'll take...
Karen, hold my laptop.
Well, Phil, I had the same problem you did. I had to move because I was losing connection.
You look like you're in your lounge, or I am.
I wish, I wish that were so, but it is more comfortable in chair I was in.
I hadn't moved to the lobby.
The tour of City Hall.
Yes. I completely scared the cleaning lady.
Do that every time I feel like. All right. So we are confirmed for you, Sean. I'll reload our page. So we are live on Facebook, so we are, I'd like to entertain a motion to come back into open session. Is there a motion?
Promoted.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstone. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Thomason. All in favor of going back into open session, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right. Sean, I guess you may have to handle the roll call on...
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're now in open session. We have one item to vote on after returning from open session. I'd like to make a motion to approve the item discussed, as discussed in executive session. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstone. And all of those in favor, Mr. Bell, if you want to do the roll call.
Mayor McClear?
Aye.
Councilmember Blackstone?
Aye.
Councilmember Derryberry?
Aye.
Councilmember Klimmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomason? Councilmember Mahoney?
You are muted, John. Say it one more time.
Aye.
Gotcha. Thank you. Motion passes seven oh. We also had moved the Jenkins Bridge Road's annexation to the bottom. We will address that matter next month. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Promoted.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstone. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Klimmer. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We are now adjourned. Thank you all. We'll see you next month.